Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to the City Council meeting of December 5th, 2024. I've got an echo, and I'm going to call this meeting to order at 7:34 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City call, roll call, vote, please.
Roll call, we have no requests under Roll Call Item A. Roll call, Councilmember Cunningham.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
She can't hear us, there's an audio problem.
You're on mute, Madison.
Just give us one moment, please, we're having an audio issue.
The city is muted if something's happening.
Oh.
Thank you, I was gonna ask the same question.
Can we, can we start over with the roll call vote, please, when we're ready? For those in the audience, please stand by, we're having an audio issue.
Yeah, he does, that's what I was thinking.
Oh, I can hear now.
You can hear now?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, let's go back to the roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Cunningham.
I'm still here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Lance.
Here.
Councilmember Mackin.
Here.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Here. City Attorney, can we please get a report out from closed session?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the closed session was held to discuss a threatened lawsuit. The city attorney reported on it, and I was given direction as to how to follow up.
Thank you. And then, can I get a first and a second to adopt the agenda as it stands?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, and a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Lance.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Aye. That brings us to oral communications, number one. I have two requests, but they don't say oral communication one, I'm going to assume that that's what they're for. First one is Michelle Salmon. It's first in my pile.
Oh, we cannot hear. There's, it's not on.
There it goes, it's on now.
Okay, now you can hear me? Okay, Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. So next week's all gonna be about, you know, the new council, the rotation, and, you know, and everything, and I just wanted to take a quiet moment to really acknowledge Karen and Colleen, and how close this race was in Brisbane.
Recording in progress.
It shows how much the people of Brisbane care about both of you, and to have only a 10-vote separation is, I've seen it before, but, you know, it's Brisbane. But Karen, I just really want to thank you for all of the hard work you've done, and I hope you will still continue to fight the good fight for Brisbane, I know you will. And I, so I just really want to acknowledge that, separate from all the hoopla next week. And also, Teri, I want to thank you for your year of mayorship, and your constant leadership on the council. And Colleen, I'm also very grateful that you, that you ran again, and, and that, you know, where we're going. And so, and then the other thing I wanted to bring up, which was a little more serious, is that I'm very disappointed that in 2019, we had agreed that we were going to restrict the deeds on those acres that the city had, with help purchased for open space. And I would really, I understand that that requires a change in the general plan at this point, a small change in the general plan, but I would really like us to step it up on that and get that done very quickly, because we have already waited almost five years, and when we were told in 2019 that it was happening. So I'd really like that to be a priority going into 2025. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And the next slip, again, I assume that's on oral communications one, is one E D E.
I just wanted to repeat what Michelle said, but I want to say thank you, Karen, for your honesty, and for your leadership and your integrity, and I valued it. And Colleen, I'm so happy you were re-elected, I appreciate all of you. You women have done a really great job, and it's been a trying year, so I thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak on an item not on our agenda? Seeing none, do we have anyone online that would like to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, I see no hands raised.
Okay. Then we will move on to Volunteer of the Year Award. This is where we formally acknowledge our Volunteer of the Year, and we've done so more casually, I guess you'd say, at our Day in the Park, but this is where we make it official. So, this is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Brisbane, recognizing Peter Grace for his volunteer service to the City of Brisbane. Whereas Peter was a dedicated community member who demonstrated ongoing commitment to the City of Brisbane while acting with the purpose of community in mind and giving selflessly to others. And whereas Peter was known throughout the community for his contributions in many areas and personally strived to improve the quality of life for others, he consistently volunteered for the hardest and most undesirable jobs where help was needed most. And whereas he was a resident voice on the Airport Roundtable and an organizer of the Concerned Citizens of Brisbane group, he volunteered countless hours to protect the residents of Brisbane from jet aircraft noise. He was a persistent advocate for Brisbane relentlessly challenging the Federal Aviation Administration and SFO administrators, and proposing a citywide resolution to address aircraft noise in Brisbane. He went as far, he went as far as to lobby with federal and state legislatures to protect Brisbane. He was an activist for change, and his efforts have benefited every Brisbane residence. And whereas Peter was a driving force behind securing the pedestrian walkway on San Mateo Lane between Kings and Humboldt Road, he circulated a community petition and advocated to the council to make it safe for children, parents pushing strollers, dog walkers, and seniors traveling on foot in the area. Whereas he volunteered countless hours supporting the Brisbane School District, and whereas Peter embodied the spirit of this award by generously giving his time, energy, and talents to the Brisbane community. We honor Peter for his tireless advocacy, community stewardship, dedicated service, and significant contributions towards enhancing the quality of life in Brisbane. Now therefore, be it resolved, that after many years of dedicated volunteering, we take this opportunity to express our gratitude for Peter Grace's tireless spirit, selflessness, and dedication to serving others. We extend our congratulations to Peter Grace and his family on being named the 2024 Volunteer of the Year. And that's dated today. So here with us this evening is Peter Grace's family, and Connie Velo, and Carol, Peter's sister-in-law, if you'd like to come up for a photo, and if you'd like to say a few words, you're certainly welcome to. Can we get, can we get Madison in the shot?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, turn around here, I might do a little, ask for a little positioning. All right, we can make that work, perfect. One, two, three. Great, thank you.
Thank you, and feel free to say a few words if you'd like.
I'd just like to say that Peter Grace loved Brisbane. It was like, he was so happy to be a member of this community, and it was so important to him to do as much as he could for this community. And I have no doubt in my mind, if he was here with us today, he would be grinning ear to ear, he would be so happy about this recognition. And so we are very happy that the town has decided to, you know, award him this Volunteer of the Year, because he's certainly worked very, very hard, and he's the brilliant spreadsheet man, as you all know. His data on airport noise is like, whoa.
That, that goes without saying, and I will say that he, he always made my work at the Airport Roundtable so much easier, because I could go in armed with information where it made me look smart.
Right.
And I was just the face behind it, but, you know, we all really appreciated all the hard work that Peter did, and he could work to where you just didn't understand how he could get, get to that level, and he did it tirelessly.
His mind was brilliant, yeah, absolutely. He could explain things the way nobody else could, and he was just a lovely person, and he really cared about everybody, everybody in this town.
Yes, he did.
I, I'd like to say something before you sit down.
Okay.
So, I used to go to meetings with the FAA, and Peter would come with me, and Jackie Spear was there as our congressperson at that point, and the FAA would treat our Congresswoman like she was dirt on the bottom of their shoes. We only respond to the President of the United States, and they were very, very condescending. And on more than one occasion, Peter was in there going, and really made these guys crazy, and I loved it. He's very capable of that.
Yes, he was.
Yeah, before you leave, you know, you're right, Peter loved Brisbane, and he was such an authentic person, right? You knew where Peter stood.
Yep.
And he wasn't afraid to let you know where he stood.
That's right.
And that's something that, that you admire about someone, and...
Yeah, he wasn't a waffler at all.
No, absolutely not, absolutely not, and, you know, one of the images, the last images I have of Peter was, was during the storm of, of, you know, a couple years ago.
He was out there digging up mud, and, you know.
And he, I, I, you know, I, he's at the top of Glen Park, and he's going right into Firth Canyon.
Yep.
And he's got, I don't know, I guess, a shovel, and he's just like, one-man, you know, show, and he, he just, he was there to serve, and, yeah, no, he, he was such an asset to our community, and, and we all miss him a lot, and, but we all appreciate him very much, too, so.
Okay, I get two cents in here, too. I had the extreme pleasure of meeting Peter when I got a phone call, and he said, "You were on the civil grand jury that dealt with airport noise." Well, that was 2010, so that's how long airport noise has been going on.
Wow.
And I had the extreme pleasure of getting to know Peter, and I will never forget the first meeting I had with him, because he was absolutely incensed. "There's fines, and they're not levying fines?" And then his sense of humor, and the second time I met with him, reams of documents, of statistics, and telling me what he had looked into, this, and this, and this, and this, and this.
He's unbelievable.
And I was absolutely in awe, because this man was so focused and not going to take no for an answer. And for anyone who hadn't seen that, I wish you had, because we're talking hours, and finally, I, I do remember the last time I met with him, and he said, "I have to stop." I said, "What, what's the matter?", and he said, "I'm exhausted, I need a break." I said, "I think you do." But we owe Peter a lot, and he was a class act that I miss all the time. I still keep a picture of him, and it, it makes me smile, because he was such a wonderful person.
He really, really was.
Yeah.
Yeah, and when he gets focused on something, he digs deep, yeah.
Intense.
Intense, very, yes.
Wait, 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 I have to, I have to say something, too.
Okay.
What a... Well, there's, there's so much that I would echo from my colleagues, I will say that if not for Peter, I think it would be really challenging to grasp just how big of an issue airplane noise is, and how all, all the regulations around it, and the waypoints, and I feel like Peter gave me, as a council member, a crash course in understanding all of that, and, you know, we had a subcommittee, Teri and I, where we met with Peter and a group of concerned citizens that he gathered together, and we met regularly until we, I think Teri and I both really grasped the issues, and he would equip us with the information, and then, you know, Teri would go to the meetings, and she would say brilliant things, but as much as I love Teri, you know, there was definitely some coaching there from Peter to help us both look good. And I'll say one thing about Peter is, like, he was just so passionate, like, if he set his mind to something, he was gonna make it happen, and it's like, you don't want to get in Peter's way if Peter has his mind set on something. I had the pleasure of being able to attend his funeral at Ambition Blue, and I will say it was probably one of the best funerals I've ever attended, and one thing that I learned, I learned so many things about Peter that day, but it was so heartwarming to be in a room of so many people who you could tell loved Peter so much, and to hear all of this, all of these stories about how he was a jokester, and he was cheeky, he was intelligent, so many different facets of who Peter was, and you can tell from, I could tell from that funeral, that Peter touched the lives of so many people, and you were better, your life was better, having had Peter in it, and I think that that is something that we all strive to leave this earth, having made a mark on our community, and having, you know, spread love and spread joy, and Peter did that, so. We're so, so grateful to be able to, to honor him in this way.
So, thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone.
So, on to happier news, or additionally happy news. Item C, Brisbane Library Annual Report, and joining tonight, us tonight is Carrie Mossing, Library Manager, and Minnie Chow, Senior Librarian, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor O'Connell, City Councilmembers, and city staff. I'm Carrie Mossing, manager of the Brisbane Library, and with me, as you mentioned, is Minnie Chow, Senior Librarian. We are pleased to present the library's annual report for fiscal year 2023-2024. San Mateo County Libraries is proud to offer services that ignite growth and strengthen our community. First established as a county-free library in 1912, sorry, I got off track there.
I'm sorry, can we move the toolbar out of the screen? Thank you, sorry.
No worries. All right. The library's Joint Powers Authority was formed in 1999. This year marks the 25th anniversary of the JPA. Our service area covers 351 square miles, made up of 11 member cities and the unincorporated areas of the county. Each of our 13 libraries is part of a larger family, offering worlds of discovery. Through innovative outreach and mobile services, enriching experiences are also delivered beyond library walls. Our communities comprise a rich diversity of individuals that our services and collections embrace and support. Our talented staff and wonderful volunteers create a welcoming atmosphere that inspires community and includes all. We're proud to say that our staffing is reflective of the communities we serve. Our programs and collection are highly used. Some exciting statistics you'll see here include 1.7 library visitors, 16% more than last year, 2.4 million items circulated, a slight increase of 4%, and over 10,300 events, that's 36% more programs and events than we offered last year. This fiscal year, our website visits increased by an impressive 51%, and we saw 4.3 million Wi-Fi sessions. Our laptops and hotspots continue to be heavily used and well-appreciated by our communities, with both increasing by 40%. More people are visiting the library and checking out our eclectic collection of materials. At the local level, Brisbane Library had over 64,000 library visitors and circulated over 83,000 physical items last fiscal year. We've also increased our program offerings year over year and seen attendance grow by more than 40%. As you can see, we've also connected with the community at a much higher rate this year, all due to our excellent Brisbane Library staff, our wonderful connections with city departments, local schools, and community groups. Libraries uplift their communities, and in turn, our communities work to uplift our libraries. Let us take you through some of the standout accomplishments from last year. We began a robust process to update our strategic plan. Working with local consultants, we held interviews and surveyed thousands of community members and key stakeholders, online and in person, at our libraries and throughout the county. Our staff visited schools, laundromats, grocery stores, and housing events to engage the community in meaningful discussions. The insights we gained will shape our new strategic plan, guiding us in meeting community needs more effectively, refining our services, and setting ambitious future goals. We're proud to say that members surveyed gave San Mateo County Libraries a 98% favorability rating. Our wide range of tech services and wellness-centered programs, including computer access, weekly tech help, yoga, and music programs, have become a favorite among seniors. In collaboration with city and county partners, we also offer services like the VA Mobile Clinic, social safety net providers, and a popular AARP Safe Driver course. Our libraries offer older adults the simple solace of a routine and provide a place for meaningful social interactions, helping to prevent loneliness and enrich daily life.
We are proud to host many online and in-person English language programs to support learners. With English classes, conversation club, book clubs, and more, our libraries have reached thousands of determined community members seeking to learn or improve their language skills. We are so grateful for our volunteers who drive those programs, who work in collaboration with our staff. Brisbane Library launched our ESL Conversation Club and now supports fly-tutor learner pairs. One of our learners has moved on to take English classes at a local community college. This year, we opened a library outpost at the Pacific Ascendus Library, a first of its kind for San Mateo County Libraries. This landing machine has a curated collection of hundreds of books and media. This new library offering allows community members to browse, check out items, pick up holes, return materials 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Plans are underway for additional library outposts to be installed throughout service area. Our libraries are bustling with frequent creative and fun offerings for community, for community members to learn, experiment, and play. We started 2024 off by hosting workshops on Adobe Acrobat, Illustrator, Lightroom, Photoshop, and more. Jam Panting, a relaxing activity that merged process-based art with mental wellness, debuted as a popular adult maker program this year, and the Imaginative Maker Mobile, so another successful year of taking tact to the streets. When serious storms spread the unexpected, our libraries are destinations with support. We provide a place to recharge, access the internet, and reach much-needed resources. This year, Brisbane Library served as a community resource center following severe rain, winds, and power outages. Our libraries offer a safe and reliable place for people to stay warm, access snacks and water, charge your devices, and gather themselves to regroup during the storms. Our impressive library champions shied rightly last year. They took advantage of every opportunity to better our community libraries, providing exceptional customer service to our patrons. We are proud that 32% of our staff speak another language, including Spanish, Cantonese, Mandarin, Tagalog, Hindi, and Tongan. Our volunteers, friends of the library groups, and foundations give us critical support through, throughout the year. 500 volunteers contributed over 25,000 hours to our success. And our Brisbane Library had many of its own exciting developments last year. I'll highlight lunch at the library, which we offer to our community member for the first time this summer. We saw new faces at the library and helped community members expand their home libraries, learn about nutrition, and participate in fun and educational enrichment activities. Okay. Thank you again for giving me the chance to share about some of our most exciting accomplishments. We appreciate the strong support and partnership with the city, and thank you for working with us throughout another successful year. I'd now like to close this presentation with a short talking video where we hear directly from our community member.
I love the San Mateo County Library system because of the vast variety of programs and services that are offered, things that you'd never expect the library to offer. I love the library.
I love the library because it is a way for me to stay connected to my mom and dad, who are deceased. My parents were both always avid readers and patrons of their local library. They raised my sisters and I to love reading and to respect and appreciate the services that a library provides to the community. This is one of the many special ways I like to stay connected with them. Thank you.
I really appreciate that you have the safe, warm place that I can just sit and read when I want to, and I appreciate that, thank you.
I love the library because I find that I'm able to access books in such a special way, and I can find pretty much whatever book I want, and I always find something off my list that I want to read. I love the experience reading books that have had a life well before me.
I like the library because you can use the maker space to make 3D printing, you can use it glow forward, and then you can do other things. I like that the staff is very kind and very helpful, so patient.
I love my library because they have wonderful bilingual resources, and I love the arts and crafts workshop.
I love my library because the staff are so friendly and helpful, and it's so pleasant to have people who want to help you find the books that you need, or the ones that your children are interested in, so I'm so grateful for them. Lots of love.
We have the best library of any county in the United States. I love the San Mateo County Library system.
All right. Thank you again for allowing us to present today and for your ongoing support of the Brisbane Library. In addition, I'd like to recognize and thank library staff for their tremendous work and creativity, Brisbane Friends of the Library for their dedication and advocacy, city staff and council for your ongoing support, in particular, Councilmember Karen Cunningham and City Manager Jeremy Davis. Dennis, sorry, for their work on the library, JPA Governing Board, and Operations Committee. Thank you, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. Anything from council members?
I do.
Karen.
It's not a question, Carrie, it's actually, I am the Chair of the San Mateo County Library Board, and I just want to give a shout-out to the staff here in Brisbane and for the rest of the library. and I just want to give a shout out to the staff here in Brisbane and for the rest of the library for the amazing work you did. I think there is something very important that you missed out in this presentation, and that's that we have karaoke machines that you can borrow, and sewing machines on Wednesday afternoon. There's a sewing class. Most of the people who take that class are men, by the way. But one of the biggest things in the achievements that we've had through the libraries in the last seven years is during COVID, when the kids got topsy-turvy in their education, the Big Lift Inspiring Summers Program called Bliss. Every child who entered that program during the summers during COVID came back up to grade-level reading, and that is because of this incredible staff that are right here. Thank you.
Just a big thank you for the great work that you do, and the community definitely appreciates and loves all the activities and services that you provide, so good work.
Great job. You know that. The statistics speak for themselves. Thank you.
Madison? Anything?
Nothing for me, but great presentation.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great work. Next up is item... We don't really have public comments on presentations. Sorry. It's up to the council if you're the mayor, so call the shots.
But it's true. What you say was true.
Sure. Come on up if you'd like to say something.
The library is even more amazing than you know, because we don't have coaches quite yet to be able to host these at the Brisbane Library, but throughout the year, multiple times a month, sometimes, we have the Fix-It Clinics. We'll have one this Saturday at the San Mateo Library. And next year, every first Monday of the month, there'll be a Fix-It Clinic at the South San Francisco Library, which is quite close. And so people are invited to bring their broken appliances, or broken toys, or broken whatever, and we'll see if we can help them fix it.
Oh, so cool.
Great. Thank you. So, moving on, item D is a presentation from Brisbane Village Helping Hands. And welcome to Nancy Coleman and Karen Latham from the Brisbane Village Helping Hands.
Hi, I'm Nancy Coleman, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to talk to you about Brisbane Village Helping Hands and for all the support the city has given us over the years. I think the last time we actually addressed the council was before the pandemic. Another world, right? But it's good to be back. As most of you know, we're an all-volunteer, local nonprofit whose mission is to help older Brisbane residents stay in their homes and connected to our community as we age. We've been operational since March of 2016, and we currently have 52 members and 57 volunteers. Our Board of Directors currently has six members. Karen Latham, who's here tonight and who's going to talk to you in a minute or two, Sherri Goodwin, Cindy Rudolph, Tony Press, Elaine Porter, and myself, and we're the ones who run the day-to-day operations of the village. Thanks to our volunteers and to the generous support of the city, the Lions Club, and various individuals in the community, over the last approximately eight and a half years, we've provided close to 1,200 services to our members. And to be a member, all you have to do is be 55 or older and live in Brisbane, so... And we require people to fill out a brief informational form and sort of abide by certain procedures, but, you know, really anybody in Brisbane who's over 55 can be a member. And the majority of the services that we've provided have to do with transportation, such as rides to medical appointments, to the bank, the grocery store, the beauty parlor, the laundromat, or what have you. But we've also provided help with technology-friendly visits and help with minor home repair and maintenance and various other services as they come up. We found that in general, at any given time, there are a few members who are in need of more services, maybe due to a medical condition or a recent surgery or illness, and that those people change from time to time. And it's worked out that, so far, we've been able to find volunteers to meet those needs in most cases. And we're always happy to help welcome new volunteers and new members into the village. And Karen's going to now talk to us, say a few words about our finances, the impact of the city's ongoing support, and our plans for the coming year, and also some information about how to contact us if you want to get involved. Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Karen Latham, as you all know, and I'm the treasure of Brisbane Village Helping Hands. I wanted to thank the City of Brisbane and the City Council for both the administrative and financial support that you give us. Our work would truly not be possible without it. The financial assistance Brisbane Village Helping Hands receives yearly from the City of Brisbane supports our work in two very important ways. We're able to pay our annual insurance costs, and we're also able to pay for our scheduling and database program, which effectively and efficiently organizes our work and communicates with volunteers and our members. We do receive donations, and those donations vary year to year. However, so far, we've been able to cover all of our other costs, like state filings and membership fees to village organizations, outreach with our community, and social events with the income from these sources. We have not charged dues to our members since the start of COVID in 2020. In total, our expenses run between $3,000 and $4,000 a year. With your support, that's a budget that we can manage for our small, all-volunteer nonprofit. We're proud that the community has embraced our work and that the city finds value in what we do. We've developed a grassroots model that really works for our little town, and we're really appreciative of this community and their acceptance of our work. In closing, I'd like to share our plans for the coming year. One thing that we're really excited about is that we have a new and improved website. Thanks to a Brisbane resident who's a professional web designer and generously donated her services. It's the same address, brisbanevillage.org, but has a cleaner, simpler look. It's easy to navigate and simple to maintain. Our first project in the coming year is getting trained on how to maintain this largely on our own, which is, you know, a little step up for some of us. But anyway, pre-COVID, we had two social events each year. They really were well-attended and lots of fun. So we hope, again, to have some social gatherings in the coming year. And finally, as we move forward, our main objective is to maintain our ability to provide our core services: transportation, help at home, friendly visits, and help with technology. We're always looking to expand our volunteer base, and we welcome new members. Anyone interested in getting involved can find out how on our website, brisbanevillage.org, or by contacting us at 415-508-2185, or can email at brisbanevillagehelpinghands@gmail... Excuse me. brisbanevillagehelpinghands@gmail.com. Thanks again for having us tonight, and thank you for all your support over the years. And if you have questions...
Thank you. Any questions or comment from council?
Just, yeah, I'm glad that you're doing this work, right? I mean, you touch so many people, and you do it, like you said, it's an organic thing that you thought up yourselves, and you're able to support the work that you do on a very small budget, right? It's just because it's about people, you know, doing the work, and, yeah, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you from the bottom of my heart. I remember when you started this, and I said, "What a great idea that someone thought to do this." Where else does this even take place? And it was really interesting tonight to hear that you have 52 members, because if you'd asked me, I would have said 25. I had no idea you were that comprehensive in our community, and I really appreciate what you're doing. It's a big need. I'm sure most people don't realize how many people are alone or isolated, and they really just need one person to come help them with something, and how hard that is. So thank you for that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on to item E, Proposed Oyster Restoration Project in the vicinity of Sierra Point. And we have Jordan Bowe here, President of Royal Hawaiian Seafood and an environmental advocate. Please welcome.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you, and city council members. Yeah, my name is Jordan Bowe, and I'm here today to introduce myself in the newly-formed Citizen Action Group, Renew SFB. We are here to talk about the importance of restoring native Olympia oysters and eelgrass in the San Francisco Bay and how we can work with the City of Brisbane to help fulfill their recently mandated sea-level-rise adaptation plan. The native Olympia oyster population in the San Francisco Bay has plummeted to 1% of what it was in the gold rush days, mostly due to landfill and sedimentation of natural habitats in the last century. The bay is now relatively clean, but the shorelines are mostly rock and mud, with very little habitat for a thriving marine ecosystem. In 2010, and with the update in 2018, the San Francisco Estuary Institute issued a 50-year San Francisco Bay shoreline restoration plan that identified the importance of oysters and eelgrass as the foundation species to improve the biodiversity of shoreline, intertidal, and subtidal ecosystems. It will also help to mitigate shoreline wave erosion and to increase public awareness, appreciation, and recreational usage of the San Francisco Bay. In 2016, a nine-county tax measure AA was passed to fund this restoration, and a comprehensive pre-application support process is available to streamline the planning, permitting, and grant approval process. In 2023, California SB 272 was passed, mandating that every shoreline municipality to have a sea-level-rise adaptation plan by 2034. Funding for planning and implementation is available to municipalities through California SB 1, Track 1, and Track 2 grants. It's important to note that the Yosemite Visitation Valley Priority Conservation Area B is considered a bi-county zone, requiring the collaboration of the city and county of San Francisco and the City of Brisbane and San Mateo County to move forward. For 40 years, I have owned and operated Royal Hawaiian Seafood, a sustainable seafood distributor to restaurants and retailers in the greater San Francisco Bay area. And since 2012, we have been operating out of a 15,000-square-foot warehouse in South San Francisco. For over 10 years, I've also become a member of the Sierra Point Yacht Club, where I have come to appreciate Brisbane's small, close-knit community, the marinas boater community, and Brisbane's unique shoreline and lagoon that runs along Highway 101. Because very little restoration has been accomplished in the last 15 years, I initiated a citizen action group called Renew SFB to help catalyze the realization of the 2010 shoreline restoration plan and a website to facilitate education and collaboration. We are specifically focused on the 408 acres of intertidal shoreline from Candlestick to Oyster Cove, identified in the plan as Operating Land Unit 28, Yosemite Visitation Valley, in which the City of Brisbane is the primary stakeholder. In initial discussions with Randy, Jeremy, and Cliff, it was agreed that a shoreline restoration plan would be an appropriate component to Brisbane's sea-level-rise adaptation plan. Renew SFB volunteers and local community organizations and businesses are standing by to actively assist and participate in addressing the science, economics, and politics of planning, permitting, funding, and implementation of the shoreline restoration component of Brisbane's sea-level-rise adaptation plan. Royal Hawaiian Seafood has already initiated a restaurant oyster shell recycling program with our customers and is building a two-year storage capacity in anticipation of donating the sanitized shells as a natural inert substrate for building living adaptive oyster reefs. A BCDC, or Bay Conservation Development Commission, permit application has also been submitted by the Wild Oyster Project to hang a test cage of oyster shells off of the Brisbane Marina Fishing Pier to assess natural oyster recruitment levels. The Wild Oyster Project has also recently completed an oyster restoration installation at Heron's Head Park, Hunters Point, San Francisco. We have much to learn from their collaborations and experience. There's much to do, and time flies, so we strongly recommend the City of Brisbane to urgently move forward with the mandated planning process and apply for funds from both SB 1 and Measure AA. The Slide 1 here is a summary of the problem, the solution, and the call to action of why we're doing this. And the second slide here is an outline of Brisbane's mandate and response options. And I emphasize the funding component of it because I know this is something that's important to the City of Brisbane, who's going to pay for this and what needs to be... But there's lots to be done, and I hope we can move forward with it.
So, Jordan, I know that we've talked, and I know that you've talked with city staff. When you're talking about this program of instituting oyster shells in a confined kind of sack of some sort, some sort of containment device, and seeding it with oysters, oyster shells, and then eelgrass and oysters, so that it...
Two separate components. The oyster restoration is in the intertidal zone from the shoreline in the narrow, shallow areas. And then in the deeper area is the eelgrass restoration, so kind of two separate. But together, they will help restore the natural ecosystem that we usually have and support the growth of a diverse ecosystem.
And does that also reduce some of the intertidal flooding and the...
It will help. We're trying to...
Slow down sea level rise.
We're trying to achieve vertical growth, living adaptive vertical growth as the sea level rises to mitigate the erosion, the force of the wave against the seawall. As you know, there will have to be solutions for the Highway 101 corridor as the sea level rise. Randy mentioned that they're going to have to close the tubes off that interconnects the flow to the lagoon, because as the sea level rises, the lagoon will rise and also flood the towns, surrounding towns, and that's where you... So you have to deal with Caltrain for the highway, Caltrans, and the trains, and all the transportation units directly. But, yeah, the first steps is to do the design, the engineering, and to confirm, to have come with a plan that will complement what else will need to be done in this whole plan.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from our council?
I would just say I subscribe to Knee Deep Times. You may know of it. And they work a lot on bay restoration, and I've read about this, and it's really fascinating. And I'm really pleased to hear that you're motivated to do something here. I think there'll be a lot of interest in Brisbane as well, lots of interest here.
There is. It's a central component... It's a central component of Brisbane's shoreline and the ecosystem, and it's a very important, going to be a very important component of the sea level rise adaptation plan.
Yeah, you know, it was a pleasure meeting you at the Coastal Cleanup earlier this year, Jordan. I got to learn about you and this nonprofit that you've created, and, you know, that's what it takes. It takes individuals that, you know, go the additional distance and have that passion and do the research. And you're right, Colleen, I mean, there are other projects around the United States that are doing this, and it is making a difference, and, you know, and it solves multiple issues.
For me, the target is also the community involvement, the education component, and I'd really like to work with the Brisbane School Districts and surrounding school districts to be part of their future, their environment, and they're the future stewards of our, you know, environment. So, it's at all levels that we want to involve people with. But it's also important to know that in this project, the City of Brisbane will have to begin to engage with their neighbors, and that's the politics too.
Absolutely. Well, you know, I mean, this is, many times, this is where it starts.
Yeah.
Right? A concerned citizen, you know, with a really good idea, you know, comes to the council, makes a presentation, and then, and then the staff goes and does the research and evaluates the feasibility of the city's participation. So, I hope that it does work out and that we can do something together.
There's many examples and organizations to work with that we're not alone, and we don't have to reinvent the wheel here.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jordan.
Thank you, Jordan. I learned a lot.
Thank you, Karen. Any other questions?
Madison, I can't see your face, no. Well, thank you very much, and, you know, I'm really glad that, over the last year or so, that we've been able to connect and to introduce you to staff and to get input from staff and hopefully collaboration and cooperation. So, thank you very much.
It's going to take a village.
Another village, yes.
Exactly. Thank you, Jordan.
Thanks, Jordan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, that is going to move us on to our consent calendar. And are there any items that anyone would like to remove, or can I get an approval for, to adopt consent calendar items F through L?
Some moved up. Second.
Okay.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Cunningham.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Aye, thank you. And now, on a similar vein, we're going to move on to new business item M, which is to receive Brisbane Marina Sea Level Rise Memorandums, and staff report, please.
Yes, ma'am. Let the clerk get it up to speed here. Well, Mayor, Member 10, council members, good evening. What a lovely evening it is. It's a great time of year for me. I love this nice sunny weather we have during the day and this cool crisp weather at night, but we're not here to talk about Randy's favorite weather and how he likes to sleep. We're here to talk about sea level rise, in particular, its impact on Sierra Point, and even more precisely, on probably about the eastern 20% of that landmass that you see out there in front of you, because that's where our marina is, and that's where our nearshore utilities are. So, this is a picture of what happens during king tides. King tides are a biannual event. It occurs when the earth, the moon, and the sun are all the closest that they ever get to each other, and so we get this water coming up this high. This is, in particular, Dock 1, and you can just barely see in that photo to the right, there's a little water bird that can't even make it under the, can't even make it under the gangway, so he's wondering what the heck is going on. This is the same situation, king tide. It's at Dock 2 is the picture to the left. The lower parking is the one to the right. So, that's the parking that's just shoreside of where Dock 1 is, and that's the public restroom or the private restroom, rather than you see in front of you. One of the things I want to highlight about this is that this is just during king tides in modern conditions, in today's day, all right? This is not with a storm surge created by a strong wind and a strong rainstorm. This is not the future. This is the flooding we get now, twice a year out there. So, what's going to be inundated by 2050? Everything in that purple-blue color is most likely going to be underwater as a result of sea level rise in 2050. So, what does that mean? Well, even prior to 2050, we're going to have some issues with the onshore utilities. That picture to the left, the dark line that's in there, shows you where the 16-inch high-density polyethylene line that is a loop around all of Sierra Point is. That line can't be inundated. If we have a break in that line, we won't be able to get to it, and if we have a break in that line and seawater gets into it, it makes, excuse me, it makes all of the drinking water in Sierra Point non-potable.
Excuse me, Randy?
Yes, ma'am, sure.
That's the potable water line?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's important to mention.
It is, yes.
How critical that is.
It is. It's the drinking water line. You're exactly correct. Yes, thank you for helping me clarify that. And the picture to the right are the storm drains and the catch basins that discharge into the bay and our marina. Some of you have already seen the situations. If you walk down at the marina, the area, I call it the Brisbane and Barkadero because I think it's a lovely walkway we have there that's part of the Bay Trail. To the shoreside of that, where the restrooms are, over the years, you've seen flooding in there, and some of you may have noticed that we're even starting to see plants that really live in seawater there.
Yes.
And that's because they've been backing up. And what we've done on the majority of those now is we have installed some anti-backwater valves in there, and so we're stopping the water from flowing back through the discharge pipes and coming up in the catch basins or in that grassy area, but that's only a temporary fix, okay? So, that's the issue we have with utilities. What are the marina issues we're going to have? An equally big problem. In just six years, that marina is going to be 50 years old, and that's a typical lifespan for it. Just like actuarials in every other situation, just because it turns 50 doesn't mean it's going to fall off the clock, right? Just like, when I turn 65 today, even though I'm eligible for Medicare, it doesn't mean I automatically need Medicare and everything I do, but I do have a couple of clumsies, obviously, as you can see from my hand. But the other issue we have out there, and perhaps the more expensive one, it's the elephant in the room. I have to bring it up, right? It's a broken finger. The other issue out there that's going to be problematic by 2050 is the breakwater. The breakwater, for those of you not familiar with that term, oftentimes it's also called a seawall. That is the concrete wall that runs parallel to the marina, and it's farther out into the bay than the marina. There's still some question as to whether we would be able to repair that, or whether we would have to install a completely new one, and that's why if you looked ahead at the pricing that was in the staff report, there's a really, really significant difference in pricing in those two. So, what do we do? Where do we go ahead? So, I've got three things that I would suggest. You look at me and say, Randy, yes, you'd probably do those. The first one is to come up with a CIP to fix the storm drains by 2030, and the reason I think that is important is that we already have areas at Sierra Point that are flooding. We flood at the intersection of Sierra Point Parkway and Marina Boulevard, the intersection of Marina Boulevard that's closest to the Highway 101. That already floods during king tides, during heavy storms, and I think if we don't get to it by 2030, it's going to continue to increase. It's going to be worse. The second plan is I think we have to develop, obviously, a CIP to have that water line relocated. It's not, that's not a difficult project to do, but it's not an inexpensive project. But as Councilmember Mackin pointed out, that is the potable water line that serves all of Sierra Point. If we have a break in it, we don't have potable water at Sierra Point, which also means we don't have firewater at Sierra Point. So, I think that's going to be prudent. And the last thing, and I put this in because I was a little worried that somebody might have read the staff report and read ahead to the dollar amount and thought that I was going to come here and ask you for $100 million. That's not what I'm doing. If anybody thinks that, please breathe in, breathe out. We are not trying to fund a $100 million improvement right now, but I think now is the time to develop a request for proposals, and it really needs to be a formal proposal because I think we need people that are familiar with marina engineering in the Bay Area, that could analyze what other marinas there are, what other marinas are going to continue to operate and not operate, because that plays a role in this marina. I think we need somebody who does funding to help us, how we would fund those very, very large dollar amounts out there, and I think we also need a consultant that's in the grants world so that we could have a very, very detailed report on, here's what we think your future actions are. If you want to consider preserving a marina and continue operating a marina beyond 2050, I imagine that there will be steps, there will be suggestions about how we could prepare ourselves for that, because I don't think anybody on staff imagines that we're going to come up with $100 million and recover that in slip fees. That just doesn't strike me as a nonstarter unless every other marina in the Bay Area was to go out of business. So, these are my suggestions to you. I'm happy to take questions on the presentation. I'm happy to take questions on the memorandums.
I know you're prepared, so why don't we let you go first with your questions?
No, actually, I just, I would like, Randy, one thing. When you mentioned the water line, that really hit me between the eyes. So, we hear water line. It's PVC pipe, correct?
It's a form, it's high-density polyethylene.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Close enough.
So, mentally, I go, all right, there's water coming in, but it's in a PVC pipe, no problem, except when you read the report where the maintenance issues of a pipe, if it starts going underwater, are extreme to handle, plus the fact that if there's any break in that pipe anywhere, you won't know because it's underwater, and then, any intrusion into that pipe, the water's not safe.
Exactly.
And you don't know.
Exactly.
So, people get sick in the process.
Exactly.
Very serious.
And in the last 10 years, we've had breaks in that water line in the segment that's going to be inundated by 2050.
So, it's not something you can just say, well, the pipe's fine. It's inert. It's not going anywhere.
I agree with you 100%. Yes.
Please, Karen.
I have a dumb question. Can we move that pipe somewhere else?
Sure. Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so what will we do with it?
Let me see if I can get the, if I can get this to back. So, you see the line running north and south there?
Yep.
So, what you do is you move that line to the left, and you move it outside of the terminal, outside of the dashed area, and the way you do that is really simple. So, on the pieces that are running east to west, on the top and bottom of that, you cut a T into place, and that T, you install gate valves on the main run and on the branch of the T, and what that will allow us to do is will allow us to continue to operate the pipe as it is now, serving the marina now, until we decide to isolate it, and when we decide to isolate it, we just close off one of the isolation valves, and then we'll be routing the water through the pipeline that's running, that is in a location that is west of its current location.
So, do we know how much that would cost? Because that seems like, to me, looking at all of this, something we should do now-ish?
I don't think it needs to be done until 2050, ma'am, so that's why I haven't made it much more of a priority than just getting it into your CIP program and getting it scheduled.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Not a dumb question at all. I appreciate you asking.
I have a couple of questions, but Cliff, do you have something?
You know, I have a few. Why don't you go ask?
Okay. So, in the EKI report, on page 6 of 46, 122 over packet, I'm not sure how you want to look at it.
6 of 46 is perfect for me, ma'am.
Okay, 6 of 46. It talks about the storm drain system.
Yep.
And then it said that it would need to have tide gates. Aren't those the duck bills you were talking about for the backflow?
Yes.
Okay, so they just didn't notice them?
Yes. No, no, I think what they're saying is there are some locations where they don't have them. So, some of these, depending upon where you are in the hydrological scheme of things, right? Because we try and do these storm drain pipes all as gravity fall, right? We're trying to get from a high point and just not have to put pump stations in. The pump stations aren't discussed as a possibility, but as you're lower and closer to the water, simply putting in those anti-back siphons, those duck bill valves, whatever we want to call them, that will work, but as you get higher up, or as you get further back, there are other problems you have to deal with moving things.
Okay. And then, on this report that, you know, is very involved and in-depth and scary as hell, we have just the marina area.
Correct.
But the water's not going to stop there.
Nope.
It's going to be on the other sides of the site, you know, which is even a greater linear footage or acreage, like on the sides. Is that something that we're going to need to work on inundation issues on both of those sides also, correct?
Sure. Can I, let me answer that probably three ways. To be first directly responsive to your question, yes, at Sierra Point, we will have to do that. We've got some fairly decent indications right now that the only other areas of Sierra Point that are going to possibly be impacted are the slough that is at the northwest end of Sierra Point. It's just north of 3,000, 3,500 Marina.
Phase 3 building.
Yes, exactly. Phase 3 real estate building. So, that's a problem. That looks like we'll have problems there. We'll have to deal with that.
And what about the pump lift station where the road takes the big dip and you get the roller coaster?
Yes, the, my year-round traffic calming device that, yes.
Yes.
I got to come up with some name for it.
It is a 25 mile an hour curve, yes.
So, yeah, yes, that is not in an area that we think is going to be inundated, but the area I thought you were going to ask me about was Sierra Point Parkway, because I mentioned that in the staff report that we're pending a grant application to study that, because that's one of the questions that's been brought up previously in chambers when we've talked about sea level rise. People are like, well, are you worried about the marina? You're not going to be able to get there. And Sierra Point Parkway has flooded in the 24 years or so that I've been here. We've closed it a couple of times during high tides, during storm surges. That's happened, and so that's part of why we want to look at it. Jordan and I have had conversations. Jordan kind of outed some of my early back-of-the-envelope thoughts on what I think's going to happen. I am going to bring in somebody who's an expert on hydrology to study that and see where we go, but if you just ponder it, I think a reasonably intelligent person can understand, well, if sea level rise keeps coming up, and it rises up above the invert, the bottom of those reinforced concrete boxes that people fish off of, how is our stormwater going to exit? Where's it going to go? Well, that's a really good question. We have to ask that, and part of that discussion and study will help us understand how do we protect the lagoon? How do we continue our storm drain infrastructure? How do we protect Sierra Point Parkway? How do we protect US 101 in that area? And then that leads to an even bigger conclusion. I think Len Maderman from One Shoreline is going to be on, is going to speak to us after I finish answering questions here, and because we've worked with Len and we've worked with our grant consultant, we've realized that we're on the bay. Man, we don't have any choice. We've got to study it from northern city limit to south city limit, and as some of you are nodding and realizing, it doesn't end at city limits. Sea level rise doesn't really care about these artificially-created jurisdictional lines that are on paper. You know, the water's going to go where the water wants to go, so we're going to have to do these studies in a much more holistic, in a much more interregional, intermunicipal manner, and we're going to have to respond to it that way. Sorry for the long-winded answer.
So, with how the rest of Sierra Point is situated with, you know, mostly privately-owned land, at what point does water inundation that comes from the shoreline, and which is BCDC territory, and we need to protect, allegedly, or supposedly, or whatever, become the property owner's issue? And when do we expect inundation that could cause cap failure issues?
So, out to 2,100, we don't see that. To the year 2,100, we don't see that, and prior to that, we do see some of that flooding at the slough, their phase 3's project, that I think will be some of their problem. I think. I don't want to say that definitively right now, because I haven't studied it to that level and had a conversation where I could say, yes, that's a private party problem, but not prior to 2,100.
Unless we just speed things up radically.
I'm going to pray against so much of pending decisions. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, those are my own... Okay, those are my only questions for now.
Randy, did you say that someone else is going to be presenting tonight?
No, I believe that Len Maderman, who is the executive director of One Shoreline, has, I, I believe that he's online and I think he's gonna be one of the commenters when we open this up for public comment.
Oh, okay, no, that's good then. Um, yeah, no, I just have a, a few questions then. So Randy, you talked about the, 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 the costs, right? And of course, we have other capital improvement costs and, and we do our best, right? But those numbers are always like really large and, and, and we chip away.
Sure.
But there are some recommendations in here that, um, you know, that, yeah, I'd like for you to maybe just get a little bit deeper into the weeds about.
Okay.
So, um, on, uh, page two of 48, you know, so it talks about the utilities and it, so we have this little box here of the, the various costs for water line relocation, the storm drain modification and the sewer system.
Sure.
Relocation and that's depending upon what type of, of, like a storm drain.
Right, whether it ends up being gravity flow or where we have to use a lift station and pump the water somewhere.
I guess 13 to 14 million dollars.
Total, right.
You are recommending that, that we do some of this work by 20?
30.
30.
Yes.
Right, so, um, that's only five years away. Uh, of, and, and then some by 2040, I guess the water facilities.
Right.
So, um, how, how much are you, uh, suggesting that the city, um, start to earmark some funds for, um, say now?
For the storm drain modification, so that's gonna, that's the five to seven million dollar number. And, and that's why my suggestion is you tell me to bring it back as a CIP. If we bring it back as a CIP, the first thing we'll do is a detailed design on it so we know what the numbers really are.
Okay, okay.
So that, that we need to be budgeted out to, to 2030 on. And again, what, what my hope is, is that when you get these plans ready and you get them available, I mean, because they are a direct response to sea level rise, there is some grant money available for these things. But you have to spend the money upfront to develop the project. So say we're talking a six million dollar project, oftentimes the, the cost to design a project like that is 15%.
Okay.
So 900,000, call it like that, is, is what it would take to, to get a, a full design in. And then I think we would stand a much better chance of getting grants. And, and as we continue to march forward on this, as you continue to get closer and closer to 2030, there's gonna be more and more of these grants that are gonna come up. Because we're gonna start seeing the intrusion, we're gonna start seeing the sea levels starting to impact people. So that's certainly my hope. I, I don't think we're ending up funding these 100% out of a city budget.
Okay, no, that, that, that's good to know. Um, you, you know, and, and, and the, the costs that are, that are stated in the, in the two reports. And so they say it's 2024 dollars.
Yes.
Right, but we know that a lot of these projects, you know, obviously are gonna happen later, you know, in the future. So, um, doesn't that go to say that the cost would be more expensive than what we see right now?
Oh, absolutely, sure. I mean, well, the reason you bring things back to 2024 is because i- i- if you don't, if you're trying to look at the cost of one thing in 2050 dollars and something else in 2030 dollars, it's very difficult for people to understand that. So that's what engineering economics is all about, is you use and assume rate of interest and you look at the periods and such. And you bring it back all to one dollar a point. So that way, the projects at least, they, they make sense for you to compare them. But your point that they will be more expensive just because CPI is gonna go up, cost of materials will go up, is absolutely correct.
Okay, um, you know, one of the, 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 what's it called? Uh, the reventment?
The revetment?
Right, I, I've never heard that word before, so I was like, what the heck is that? So right, so basically the, it's the, I guess the thing that, that keeps water and other things getting into the system and it's, or, uh, it's like, uh...
I believe the revetment you're referring to.
It's an armored slope from along the waterfront, so basically that's where the, the Bay Trail is?
Yes, so what, what the revetment does in particular at Sierra Point is you've got, you, they built up an area that was designed to be an initial solid waste landfill, yes? And then they backfilled that area, they drained the water out of it and then they backfilled it.
Okay.
And then they created a designed landfill where you have trash, and then you have earth cover, and then you have a clay cap there so that water can't permeate down through it and, and hasten the creation of methane gas. And then you have a foundation layer to protect that, and then you have more earth cover. The revetment on the outside is designed to keep that landfill matrix, the landfill matrix where it belongs. That, that's what the revetment is.
Got it, got it.
So just think of it as those big pieces of riprap that are out there on the side.
Okay, and then, you know, just kinda looking at the, you know, the, you know, what is projected to happen during certain milestones, right? 2030, there are some, but it seems like, you know, we should be fine. It's the 2050 timeframe where things start to get real.
Yes.
And then, and then, you know, then you go into 2070 and of course 2,100. So the recommend date, so right now, I guess we're at like close to 10 feet?
Yes, yeah, nine-ish, right?
But we need to be at 17.
Right.
Something, right?
So think, so 17, think of that area that we all used to call parcel R at the end of Sierra Point Parkway.
Mm-mm, yes.
Its base elevation is right around 17. So that's why even as you look further out in the years, it tells you that Sierra Point, the, uh, Sierra Point Yacht Club has to move. Cause it's below that pad, if you're kinda thinking about where things are.
But I think right now it's like around 15, so it, it could last through, it, well, it, it probably won't last that long anyways, right? Just, uh, just cause buildings.
I don't know, it's a good building, it's a nice building, I think it's in good shape.
Things last if you maintain them.
This is true.
And that's the same thing with our Marina, that even though this report says we've reached its 50-year lifespan, it doesn't mean that it's fallen off the face of the earth. It's still, if you maintain things, you can, I mean, we have hundreds of year-old buildings in places that have been civilized for that long. If they're maintained, they add up, you know, they have adaptations, streets rise, they keep getting taller. You know, and pretty soon the first ground level is really the basement. Um, you know, and that's where we're gonna have to be going with some of this stuff, I think.
Yeah, so, you know, that gets right to that next question, Randy, like, just kinda like paint that picture, right? If we, if we're, if we're, do you see us preparing for 2050? And then, then that council around that time prepares for 2070 and then the council around that time prepares for, or, or, you know, is it something that we should start to prepare for 2,100 sooner than later?
I, I think we need to prepare for a major decision prior to 2050. And part of that decision is gonna be, what do we really need to do? And because as, a- as the mayor points out, yes, I, we just went through a very extensive project out of the Marina not that many years ago where we had beefed up the staff out there and we were going around, we were replacing all the hardwood. Uh, the challenge we have is the, the billets themselves, those flotation devices that are out there that are made of concrete, those are starting to fail, those are starting to get waterlogged, they have a very thin concrete coat on them. I, and I wouldn't come to you and say, well, let's replace all of those and replace them in place. When we know that, you know, 20 to 30 years from now, they're gonna be underwater. Part of the challenge is that way they float up and down on the piles, we've gotta have the piles at the right height for them. Then you've gotta think about what we do with the gangways and where does that go? Um, but I think if we continue to look at it, we continue to put it as a CIP, there will be a council that's gonna have to make a decision in the future that's gonna say, okay, we know everything now. We know the elevations we need to get things to, we need the costs we need to get things to. We know what we think, what we anticipate we will get for grant funding. We may have to be using lobbyists to go after earmarks to help us get federal dollars on it in a future time period. Right? And then they will say, okay, that then leaves us, what's the remainder of the funding? Because that's an enterprise fund out there. So we're gonna say, alright, well, for that to work, this is what the slip fees would have to be. And then a council will be making a decision, say, does all of this work together? Do, do we have enough dollars? And do we have the ability to impose these sort of slip fees so that we can continue to operate a Marina into the year 2,100?
Yeah, alright, thank you.
Sure.
Another dumb question for you. So those concrete things that go up and down out to the...
Right, the billets, yes ma'am.
Billets, that's what they're called?
We call them billets, yes ma'am.
Have we looked at, is it possible, have you looked at the potential of taking them off where they're attached to now? And adding some other structure that could give them longevity relative to sea level rise? I mean, has that been done anywhere? I mean, I, I see around at Oyster Point, there's some funny-looking things they've added to some of those billets.
So, so the billets need to be replaced. I, I would say that they are definitely approaching the, the end of their useful life. We're just kind of keeping them together with, with duct tape and, and baling wire right now. Uh, the bigger question is really the pilings, right? Cause the pilings go into the ground and then they only, they're so deep, they're solid, but they only go so high. So you've gotta have them high enough so that if you put a new billet there, the billet doesn't reach the top and float away.
Yeah. I mean, that sort of sounds simplistic, but, you know, could we put pilings in that were higher? And then we could just keep moving them as a less expensive potential option?
Well, I, I'm gonna throw something out that I know absolutely nothing about.
Well, I didn't know anything about that.
Hypothesis. Um, in 10 or 20 years, when this becomes more of a reality, there's every possibility that the marinas in Southern California and other places in the world who have the same problem have innovated some sort of floating Marina system, hydraulics or floatings or other remedies to how a traditional Marina would work.
Right.
And how a traditional, you know, hy- the hydraulics of it all would work rather than the simplistic form that we have had for, you know, many years here and, you know, for centuries before it. Um, and, and come up with other ways to deal with some of these sea level rise issues. You know, and to say something about, um, Paul Bouschall, who always talks about floating houses. Um, the same kind of innovation could be used at a Marina or for buildings that get traditionally or now inundated with water on how they deal with it.
True.
I mean, the other thing is to build a, a moat around the entire Bay Area with, you know, concrete walls or steel walls to protect it, you know, and have sort of like what the Bay Delta is right now. Where most of those, those little islands are little islands that have been re- they're reclaimed land.
Right.
And, you know, they're far enough up the delta, but they're still, their levees are failing and having to be pumped out and, and all that. And, you know, same kind of ground squirrel problems that are exasperating it and all these other things. But I think that innovations are gonna have to come. We're not going to end having boats when the water just keeps rising. They're just gonna have to find innovative ways to do it. And, you know, eventually my house halfway up the hill is gonna be waterfront.
I, I, I completely agree with you, Mary. In 10 to 20 years, there are gonna be technologies and solutions that none of us are thinking about today. That will happen. I really think the more important piece though, is that continuing to work with our neighbors and continuing to work with regional organizations. Because as you see right here, this would just, you know, if somebody said, hey Brisbane, good luck, that's your problem, deal with it, come up with a hundred million dollars of city of 5,000. That, that, that's not a very workable solution.
Well, they wouldn't be able to get from San Francisco to San Jose.
It, it, well, exactly, you're gonna, what, you're just gonna lose 101? That, that's ridiculous.
Go back to Bay Shore.
If Len is listening, he's probably cringing right now.
No, no, I think Len is on board, Len is like, yes, that, that is his role, that is why his organization was created.
Okay.
There he is.
Good, thank you.
Anybody else's questions before we open this up for public comments?
Well, I, my question, my big question was the one that Randy had answered earlier about Sierra Point Parkway and, and like how holistic, uh, consultant would be. Because it's not just the issues that are identified in this report. It's getting to Sierra Point and also the cap, which is, you know, my, my guess will be also impacted the landfill. And so I would hope that, and, and I don't, I don't know if like, you know, a, a consultant is too specialized to look at all those things. But I think that there are so many other things that have been identified that are also part of this problem that we have to consider in addition to all the costs that, you know, maintaining our Marina or saving the Marina would require. So, um, could you speak to that, Randy, about, um, cause I know you mentioned Sierra Point Parkway, but would a consultant also look at the cap as well? Or would that be somebody else?
Well, well, let, let me start by saying that the easiest solution would be tide gates at the Golden Gate Bridge, right? If we, if we took a Netherlands approach, uh, to dealing with problems. But I don't know that that'll have, ever happen, I don't know that's realistic. Um, as far as the cap in particular at Sierra Point, because Sierra Point is not envisioned to be overtopped, I don't worry about the cap having a break and being intruded from the surface. The, the concern I do have, and it is one that we have not yet studied, is the, the effect of rising hydraulic pressure in the ocean causing more pressure against the revetment and against the exterior now underground walls of the landfill and water getting in that way. And that, that is something that needs to be studied still, but we have not yet. And I, and I do not think that, well, I know that none of the studies we are, we are looking at presently would be reviewing that.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Yes ma'am.
May I make one more comment? You know, sitting on CCAG and I've, we've had Len here and we've also had Len at, uh, CCAG meetings, thinking that until recently, and this is really until recently, they weren't even talking about the fact that 101 was gonna flood in this sea level rise. It just seems like a conversation that should have happened 10 years ago and is now like, oops, we forgot that one.
Yeah.
So that's probably a comment for Len when he wants to chat.
Well, that and, you know, with the, the regional issues, I mean, almost everyone's sewer treatment plants are gonna be flooded. And so, and I shouldn't call them sewer treatment, water treatment plants. I mean, there's a lot of infrastructure, you know, the entire peninsula, the entire Bay Area that, you know, is gonna be under threat. And they're all very real threats, so. And all big money threats. Anyway, let's open it up for public comment. Um, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak, please?
Thank you, I'm Jasmine. Full disclosure, I'm not a Brisbaneite, I live next door in South City. So I just wanna say, Randy, thank you for your vision. You spoke directly to the due diligence I've been conducting in preparation for this meeting. I'm on Jordan's committee, the Renew SF Bay. And I, as I listened to Randy, I felt the collective tremble of the committee here sitting before me, listening about the monies and the implications of seven figures in 2050. So the comfort I want to offer you is that SB 272, the California law that was passed in October of last year, speaks directly to everything that has been discussed here. Specifically Randy's sea level rise report and what you intend to do. So if you decided to apply and take advantage of that law, just know that the SB 1 grant can jumpstart your program, the SLR program, up to a million dollars. I think that should be enough to begin designing the plan that Randy has intimated. And then SB 2 offers a little bit more money, well, a lot more money, but all this needs to happen by 2034. So if you decided to apply for the SB 1 grant, just know that, let's say you, you applied for it in March, the discussion by OPC, which is a cabinet-level decision-maker in Sacramento will not meet for it until 3 to 4... decision maker in Sacramento will not meet for it until three to four months later. But it's a running application and I would strongly urge that you think about the imminent wonder of this because it's non-competitive. Whereas SB two is competitive, the more money you grant. But you only have nine years to do this, so I think this is really, really imminent. Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine.
Madam Mayor, may I make a suggestion since Len's joining us this evening? Maybe it makes some sense to hear from him, um, which I think would help um, with the public comment questions and, and the like. There may be some things that Len has to offer that the public would like to hear. Um, so.
Sure.
Len, you wanna share a few comments?
Uh, sure. Thanks very much, Jeremy. And hello, Madam Mayor and council members. So, um, for those of you that, that don't know me or the agency that I run, it's the San Mateo County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District. Uh, we're also known as One Shoreline, and that was referred to earlier by Randy. Um, we're a special district created by state legislation established January one, twenty twenty uh, to deal countywide with the water-related impacts of climate change. So, uh, I prepared some comments, but your conversation was so robust the past twenty minutes or so and, uh, and the public comment that was just received, that all abbreviated pretty significantly. Um, basically, the reason that, that Jeremy and Randy and I were talking recently and the reason that I'm here tonight is to say that, um, we've also, One Shoreline has also been in discussion with the city and county of San Francisco, uh, which of course adjoins Brisbane to the north and the city of county, and then the city of South San Francisco about their plans for shoreline adaptation planning. And, uh, and as was mentioned earlier during the, um, presentation on the oysters and, uh, and in the public comment that was just received, um, there is a requirement now that cities that touch the bay uh, comply with BCDC's guidelines that were approved earlier today after a couple of years of work by BCDC. There's also requirements for coastal towns that, uh, guidelines that were, are being approved by the Coastal Commission. Um, so we at One Shoreline have a strong interest in continuing to work with Brisbane as well as San Francisco and South San Francisco to make sure that there's a regionally aligned, aligned shoreline approach. Um, and, uh, and the work, uh, in the regional shoreline adaptation plan also fits in well with our work at One Shoreline on uh, countywide policy guidance for the planning and approvals of private developments and public infrastructure, including the kind of infrastructure that Randy was talking about earlier, the marina and, and the water, um, the potable water, uh, pipeline. Um, and, and right now we have a consultant under contract to develop guidance to make uh, that kind of infrastructure, water recycling, water treatment, potable water supply, as well as roads and stormwater systems more resilient to future conditions. And, um, and that consultant, uh, would then turn their attention after the next year uh, to parks and marinas and, uh, utilities, uh, the energy and communications utilities. So there, there is a lot going on. Um, I think that the report, that the reports that, that Randy described earlier and presented on earlier tonight um, feed in well to a broader view of the shoreline resilience, uh, strategies. And that's something that we would, uh, can propose to continue to work with, um, the city as well as its neighbors on. And then finally, the point about grants, there, the, the woman that just spoke in public comment is, uh, is spot on. There are some good grant programs that are available to fund the planning, uh, phases. Um, sometimes, uh, grants for that are hard to come by. Um, agencies like Shovel Ready, of course. Um, and we're not shovel ready on any of these kinds of things yet, but I would not wait till 2033 to start this planning exercise. Um, I would encourage the city to, to start in 2025 and, and work with us and work with its neighbors um, to secure funding and, and develop an approach that goes well beyond the marina um, throughout to, to cover the whole city in, um, shoreline. And, and our work, a- as Randy mentioned, one of the concerns, um, he was talking specifically about, uh, the landfill, I believe, but w- w- one of the areas that, that we are working on quite a bit is modeling future extreme storms and what that looks like and how that relates to the shoreline elevation with sea level rise and as Randy mentioned, storm surge and other factors. Um, and then what Randy was talking about groundwater rise. Groundwater rise is something that our bayside cities, um, have a lot of exposure to, uh, e- especially in the most low-lying areas, of course, Brisbane. Um, fortunately, in this regard, a lot of Brisbane is not as low-lying as, let's say, Burlingame or Redwood City or some of these other towns. But it does have areas that are impacted by groundwater rise and that is something that we need to incorporate into this, um, regional planning. So I'll stop there and happy to answer any questions and I'm happy to join you tonight remotely even. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for, um, Len?
Yeah, you know, I do, uh, sorry. So, um, so Len, thank you for joining us tonight. And, you know, and this probably, you know, either you or, or Randy can, can address it. So there, there was a, a federal grant that we tried to get, that's called Protect, you know, right, promoting resilient operations for transformative, efficient and cost-saving transportation. You know, we had folks on our behalf advocating, but we did not receive it. What was the amount that we were hoping to get?
Sorry, that one was in the millions. Because it, it involves some very granular survey information that we were gonna gather from, for our entire city limit.
Okay. And then you said that we have a conditional award letter for doing some study.
At the lagoon, yes.
Yeah, so how much is, is, is it similar in?
No, I, I don't, off the top of my head, it's in the hundreds of thousands. Um, I don't recall the exact number, I'm sorry.
Alright, so, um, yeah, Len and, and Randy, like, like what kind of dollars are we looking at in, just for the studies? I know you mentioned like you had like nine hundred thousand dollars. I think, Randy, for studies, but like, to really do it right and to understand, you know, what we're trying to tackle, um, you know. Yeah, you know, how, how much would those, the cost for studies and, and you know, you're right, like, how do we get the money unless we have the study to, to go out and get additional funding?
I, I think you want to focus more on the holistic study from north to south in San Mateo County, so I'll, I'll bounce it over to Len and see if he's got an order of magnitude in his mind of what he thinks it would do to put together some of those studies.
Yeah, so I would say for a study of Brisbane shoreline, um, that, that would then also incorporate some data and, um, and let's just say, uh, political participation, et cetera, from San Francisco and from South San Francisco. I would say something like that to comply with BCDC's guidelines, which are just newly adopted, right? They were just adopted today and I think that there's gonna be a learning curve by everybody on exactly what, what it looks like to comply with those requirements. But a study in, in, in that range would be, um, something around three quarters of a million dollars. And, and that amount of money is available um, through the programs that were previously mentioned, including by the public commenter. So, um, you know, personally, I think what it, what, what, what should happen now is the city and One Shoreline with the strong support of San Francisco and South San Francisco should, um, just decide, we are gonna go for this money and we're gonna start developing this. Um, and, and right now, a similar conversation, getting to Randy's point about the rest of San Mateo County shoreline, a similar conversation is happening among, um, five cities in the southern part of our county in terms of getting together, complying with BCDC and doing a shoreline adaptation plan.
Okay.
That one would be more expensive because it's just more complicated and a longer geography.
Sure. Y- y- you know, US one oh one, right? Um, you know, covers a lot of, uh, our shoreline. And obviously, the one oh one impacts much more than just Brisbane. And so, I mean, it just seems like they should be, you know, Caltrans should be, uh, getting on top of these, these studies and, and helping the cities that are along the one oh one um, to, uh, you know, to be able to, to, to have strategies based upon the information that Caltrans should be getting for us. So I mean, where's, where do you see that collaboration with, with, with Caltrans?
Well, maybe I'll go first and then, and then see if Randy or Jeremy has other comments. Um, so we have had many conversations with Caltrans about the one oh one corridor, especially in in the area along, along the front edge of Brisbane. And the way I would describe it is Caltrans has a hard time, um, let's say, uh, they have a hard time ac- uh, let's say, actualizing the, the sea level rise threat. They, they understand it completely. They've done multiple studies on their own about vulnerability of their assets. So it's not that they don't, they don't have the information. It's like, how do they turn that in, and, and utilize the Caltrans process for project development and delivery, uh, in a way that, that relates on the time scales we're talking about. And, um, all I can say about that, because I don't speak for Caltrans, fortunately, is that uh, Caltrans is, is, wants to be a partner on these kinds of activities with us. And, uh, and I would think that, I think, uh, that, I, from your question, I think there's two pieces to it. One is financial resources that Caltrans should be at the table. That's what I gather. And I, if that's not the case, I would do that. And, and, and then the second one is just kind of political support and being at the table and lending their, their, uh, interest and expertise and knowledge of the highway and the future plans for the highway, et cetera. So there's two important pieces to it. And, um, I'm, be- because of the grant programs that are available, because of what I believe is Caltrans' interest in it, I think this can be done at a, at the initial planning level to do these studies to comply with BCDC and set Brisbane and all of us up for future funding to take studies into design and then design into permitting and construction. The first step is the studies, close data gaps where they exist. Um, look at the vulnerable key assets, look at the future development plans, um, and, and look at the highway and the future plans for the highway. All of that would go into something that would probably take at least a year. I think all of that could be funded outside of city coffers, um, because of these resources and, and at this stage, I wouldn't want to necessarily look to Caltrans for money because that will take too long. I would look to them for political support so that we can get other funding that's specifically geared towards these kinds of activities to, uh, to be put towards the shoreline of Brisbane, uh, in connection with its neighbors.
Alright, no, thank you.
You'd think that, um, when Caltrain or Caltrans lifted their roadway, which one would assume they're gonna need to do, that's gonna sort of take care of a lot of that stretch of Brisbane, you know, i- by secondhand effect. But again, if they made it just a bridge, it wouldn't. If they made it a hard wall, it would.
Well, it protects us, I agree, ma'am. And, and we've always operated under the assumption that Caltrans will protect that asset. And, and I think that's a reasonable expectation. I think Len was very kind and very accurate in the way he described their ability to get things moving along. But as I noted, the problem we still have is the connection between the lagoon and the bay. That, that's where we have a challenge, pretty much regardless of what they do. Because the lagoon serves as the receiving body for probably seventy-five percent of our stormwater. And then it, then it just mitigates itself and it, it generally flows out to the bay. So we're gonna have to figure out what to do with that mass of water if we have a higher elevation of water wanting to push back against it.
Yeah.
Please.
Uh, I have a couple of questions. You know, sea level rise doesn't know city limits. And I appreciate what One Shoreline is doing. But I've also read interesting things about Foster City-built levees. So we might have in the vicinity of the entire San Francisco Bay Area, different cities going at their own initiatives in their area, which then transfers the water somewhere else. So even when I read our consultant staff report on the marina and these are based on modeling of sea level rise by twenty thirty, twenty fifty, twenty seventy, and I wonder how accurate that is, not questioning their statistics, but that first of all, we've already seen a lot of projections on sea level rise completely discarded because it's happening faster. And what I'm asking of, of Len, if you could address, what is being done within the San Francisco Bay region to coordinate this modeling so that individual areas don't say, well, this is what we're gonna do and this is gonna fix it, only to find out, guess what? The, the water that, that normally exists in the north part of the bay is gonna be coming up higher down here. Is there inter-agency jurisdictional coordination going on somewhere? Or is this all bifurcated right now?
Yeah, that's a, that's a really great question. Um, and, and I think the ans- the way I would describe it is yes, there, there is coordination going on. Um, you know, I have counterparts in each county, of course, and some of them are part of the county infrastructure. Some of them are also independent special districts. And, and we meet occasionally and, um, just this year, there was a study done that was jointly funded to, uh, kind of figure out what is the best, um, model for the bay that we should all be agreeing upon. And, uh, and so, so those conversations do happen. There's also a Bay Area Flood Protection Agencies organization that meets monthly in addition to what I just described. Um, and then finally, BCDC, i- it through its, through this SB Senate Bill two seventy-two and its, its new newly adopted, um, Regional Shoreline Adaptation Plan tries to, uh, get everybody on the same page in terms of not just moving forward on similar types of planning documents, but also using similar types of data. So, so I think, I think there's a lot of energy and a- around the question that you asked and trying to get to that so that, um, so that we are in agreement. I, I do want to say at the end of the day, um, you know, w- we at, at One Shoreline and, and our partners in the cities in San Mateo County um, understand the urgency of this and wanna move forward. And that's, the, we, that's not the case uniformly and it's not always on the same time scale. And so, um, we are trying to, to get on the same page with the other cities and many, many cities and the other eight counties. Um, uh, but at the end of the day, we also want to move forward in our area. And so we're trying to do both at the same time in a thoughtful way.
And, and one other thing, just, I've also read about, you mentioned groundwater incursion. Um, I've read about east coast areas now that because of sea level rise, of course, the shoreline has changed. And they're starting to look at foundations of buildings and saltwater incursion and groundwater incursion. And I don't know if that's something we've thought about. And, and to me, the importance is it, it puts an extra onus of having to deal with this sooner than later because you're protecting buildings as well. It's not just underground infrastructure, but it's actual foundations where they're concerned on the east coast now about foundations, buildings.
Yeah, we had a, if I could, if I could say, we had a, a Stanford PhD student who her, her thesis, PhD thesis is on groundwater rise and its effects, um, on liquefaction, which is another issue. And, and that was in the news today, of course, with the, with the earthquake in Northern California and the potential tsunami, I guess. Um, so, so there's a lot of impacts of groundwater rise on, as you said, building foundations, also on roads and also on anything that's underground in terms of utilities or some developments, even recently approved developments this year have underground mechanical equipment right along the Bay Shoreline. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of room for improvement of our, of our, of how we implement the knowledge that we have in regards to groundwater rise just as there is on extreme storms and, and sea level rise. And, and I agree with you that, you know, a building we approve today, i- in theory, that's gonna last fifty years or we hope it does, right? And, and we want these things to function for their intended lifespan as the climate is changing dramatically and the impacts of climate change are, are, are increasing. And so we should be thinking ahead on these questions when new developments and, and public infrastructure, infrastructure that we put in with, whether it's a marina or, or a park or, 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 or a road. Are we putting it in a way that we, we believe to the best of our ability today is gonna be resilient to conditions tomorrow?
Thank you.
So, do we have any other, uh, comments before we move back to public? So do we have any other comments before we move back to public speakers? Seeing none, we will go ahead. Do we have any members of the public who'd like to speak on this? Let's give everybody else a chance first before we go back to the same speaker. Michelle Salmon.
We have some problems that are, I think, somewhat unique to Brisbane in that we have so much landfill. And at the Sierra Point Marina, one of my concerns is the extreme amount of subsidence we've had over the life of the marina so far. And having lived here, growing up here, seen it built, experienced it when it was new and experiencing it now. While as comprehensive as the report that I read that we saw tonight, I'm really, really concerned that we're not looking enough at the subsidence issues out at the marina and how much the landscape has changed. And I am worried about cap failure because the type of cap that was installed in the marina has a lifespan of about 40 or 50 years, and we're at that now. And I became very concerned when I saw some sickness in the trees that were not at the shoreline, but rather internally at the marina. And I think that we need to delve deeper into that because, and part of it is the groundwater rise as well. And even in central Brisbane, in the flatlands where we are, that we have serious groundwater issues and groundwater rise. When you go back and look historically, a lot, I mean, a lot of Crocker Industrial Park was marshlands when I was a kid. And even where we are right now was marshlands when I was a kid. And then you go back and look at also historical photographs. And this is one of the reasons why the park, our community park, is often so wet in certain areas and why that central part by the hardware store floods so badly. And we have a lot of water that comes off of San Bruno Mountain. More and more is shunted straight down now because we've built so much. And I think that we have some unique problems here besides just the one shoreline issues that we're dealing with that are somewhat unique to Brisbane. So it's not just about the highway, but it's about what happens in town. Randy touched on it with, the lagoon has been the receptacle for all this water coming off the mountain that then goes out through the tubes. But that's not going to be adequate as we go forward because the groundwater, it's not going to have any place to go. So we have a lot of more complicated issues than just what we're seeing in the report. And Randy, please tell me that, I looked it up, CIP stands for what?
Capital Improvement Program.
Oh, because I looked it up and it said Continuous Improvement Program, which is about the same. We do need a continuous improvement program to deal with all of this. So I really appreciate the work so far, but I think we also really need to look at what is actually going on, the subsidence issue at the marina. The area that subsided at least 10 feet since the marina was completed is serious. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak on this item?
We have a slip, Madam Mayor, from Michael Barnes.
Please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Michael Barnes. I'm a Brisbane resident. You've received the report. It's a nice report. And it's got a lot of action items in it. It requires more study. I think that's very clear and that there may be grant funding for the next study that needs to be done. What brought me down here this evening was I believe that this current study was paid for with developer funds that were earmarked for a park out at Sierra Point. So I hope that the city council will expend the remaining funds in the developers' contribution to the city to actually develop a park out at Sierra Point and look for grant funding for the sea level rise impacts on the infrastructure, particularly for the 2030 impacts elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak? Jordan?
On December 12th, from 10 a.m. to noon, there's the Second Living Shorelines Collaborative Meeting, which I think is...
You said December 12th?
December 12th. And there will be a Zoom meeting online available. And you can register at the San Francisco Eschery Institute's website. And I think it pertains, what I liked about the first meeting is it gave us a summary of what has been done, what they are working on. Especially, they've been doing a lot of work on what they call gray wall, how to make your marina, your...
Would you share that when you're done speaking? Would you share that information for that event with our city clerk?
Yeah, I think it's very relevant. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jasmine, did you want to speak again?
Thank you. If we looked at the map of the priority development area that's comprised of the San Francisco County, San Mateo County PDA, one would appreciate the great nature of what Randy has been speaking to, which is potability of water. So my point is that if indeed this is a priority concern for Brisbane, you're already looking at a very robust rationale for a very strong grant application for SB 1 Track 1.
Thank you. We need to get you on our team. Anyone else? Do we have anyone online?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So this did not require action on our part. This was just to receive the information, get it into our thought processes, and we will have certainly done that and we'll all sleep better tonight.
You know, Madam Mayor, I mean, it does say though in the staff report, you know, to, you know, provide direction to staff as deemed necessary and appropriate. And, you know, there's a lot to digest here. And, you know, maybe perhaps having it go to a subcommittee to do a little bit more, you know, work with staff to, you know, and take in the comments that were mentioned by the public.
Well, I would certainly think this would be in the realm of the Infrastructure Subcommittee to be looking at some of the processes moving forward and looking at what is the first, second, third concerns. I think that we've given quite a bit of information to the staff tonight in our comments and discussions relative to what needs to be done irrespective of giving specific direction. You know, they know we need to do more research. They know we need to get funding. They know we need to be collaborative. When it gets to specifics, the Infrastructure Subcommittee, I think, could work on that and have some direction. But I think that pretty much all of our subcommittees could work on sea level rise and give direction. So...
I have a question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
I thought what was great was that when Randy started off his presentation, he was like, here are the things that I hope that we can move forward with. And I'm just curious, Randy, that list of items that you gave, is that what you were hoping that the council would provide direction on or support tonight? And maybe you could just recap those if they were in your first slide.
Ma'am, I've assumed that those three items that I suggested to council that you tell me that you wanted us to do, that that's, from the tone of the conversations, I've assumed that that's what you wanted me to do.
So you don't need any further direction then for us to make that even more clear?
I don't think so, ma'am, but the city manager even want to talk.
Yeah, through the chair. No, I don't think we need any additional direction. And clearly, over the next year or so, we're going to be engaging with Len and others and bring you something much more comprehensively anyway. So I think we're all on the same page related to the direction. Thank you.
And I do think that it was interesting that Len brought up the new BCDC rules that went into effect today or yesterday. So, you know, those are things that staff is still learning and will be bringing more back to us over the next years. So are we good? That moves us on to the city manager's report. City Manager Dennis, your report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. You may note, under this item, we've slightly changed the title to include city updates, which I thought was germane, given there's so many things going on and it's an opportunity to share those things. At first, I'd like to start with non-event items. Just a reminder to residents that the Quarry EIR comment period will be closing on January 6th. So keep those comments coming. We really appreciate it. I wanted to also thank residents for their comments to Caroline and other members of the staff related to our blast. We'd heard substantial comments about its length and sometimes its difficulty in navigating, and really appreciate the feedback. We're going to be experimenting with little different versions. Calling it a slimmer blast. Maybe we will use other tools to present information in a way that's more digestible, but really appreciate that. And I thought I'd take a moment just to reflect on what staff is anticipating will be a fairly heavy workload for the council in the next few months. And I just wanted to highlight a few of the items that we're anticipating bringing to the council over the course of that period of time, give or take. Starting a council conversation on the impact fee studies that we've been doing. A priority study session with the council. Mid-year budget update. We have two master plans, age-friendly and public art, coming back. Best practices workshop, and then public hearings related to district elections. That's just the stuff I jotted down to give a highlight of what is a very dense workload. So we're excited to bring you those items as they come up. Events, two events this weekend. BDW's Holiday Arts and Craft Fair, starting at 11 at Mission Blue. Hope to see people there. And then, of course, again, the Festival of Lights on Sunday. And I was talking to Caroline today and she mentioned she's going to try to broadcast some of this. So it'll be an experiment. So I hope you can tune in. And just a reminder that will be closed December 24th and 25th and January 1st. Thank you.
I'll add to that. And I know that during COVID, I happened to be the mayor and turning on the Christmas tree lights that year also. And we did broadcast live shaky, but broadcast for that Christmas event. And the weather was not particularly conducive to it, but we got through it. So it's not quite the first attempt. We'll hope it goes better than the last one. And are we having a car parade this year? Maybe that was a 2020 thing only. The drive-by, drive-by Christmas. Or holidays, I should say. And now we'll go on to county-wide assignments and subcommittee reports. Who would like to go first? Nothing from Colleen.
We had an economic development subcommittee. Karen, if you want to...
No, I don't want to report. I don't, you can.
All right, all right. Well, we got, you know, the typical report from Mitch. The, you know, Crocker Park looks like we're getting some new companies moving in. And so the park looks pretty vibrant and almost at 100% with these new folks coming in. And, you know, we're also looking at other ways to potentially generate revenue for the city through our businesses.
Okay. And I had an airport roundtable meeting last night. We had a report out about the electric vehicle takeoff and landing vehicles, the EVTALLs, and some of the new guidelines that the FAA has put in as far as training with them. And that they're coming fast. It's been in the work for 10 years. And South San Francisco has a project with velaports for them, which now has been taken off the bay and is going to be put on a rooftop, is the new proposal. But that's going to be about a year out while they work on a memorandum of understanding. And then we did do the rotation. And a lot of our people on the roundtable that are members of council have termed out and have been, so are not going to be back. And so we're going to be really working hard to get more of that stability back in and the historical knowledge to keep it going. And we've had a really good working relationship with the FAA that's come about in the last year. And I'm really very, very pleased with that. So... Most of it was a celebratory night to say goodbye to the retiring members. But we did have some interesting stuff that came out about the velaports and helaports that could be coming to us or a city near us. And I passed on that information to city staff. And that's all I have. Madison, do you have anything?
Karen and I had public art recently. And we met with Nine Dot Arts to review sections of our, of the plan. So they made this really helpful flow chart so that the public can understand how the process works. So for example, if a, it'll outline like how funds flow into our budget. And also, if a company, you know, triggers the public art fund... Hold on, gotta play past the baby. If a company does something that triggers the public art fund and they need to contribute, it'll outline a couple of options for them. So it'll show that, you know, they can just make a contribution in lieu, write directly to the Public Art Committee, which can then determine how those funds are spent. They can create their own, you know, hire their own artists and do their own project. They also suggested some modifications to that. And one other option, which could be that they could, you know, seek help from the committee and have more of an engaged process with us if we have the bandwidth. So then shows what happens. And then it also shows like if the committee is spending public art funds and we choose a place for a project, how that process works. We create an RFP, it goes out to artists, artists apply. So it's basically the step-by-step of the public art process. So it makes it really easy for the public to understand. So we mostly talked about that. And we also talked about topics such as when somebody, if somebody wants to donate art to the city, what a policy around that might look like. And if, say, a business exists in Brisbane and then they move, what happens with the art that they might have erected on their site? Do we get that art? Do they take that art with them? Who maintains that art? Where does the responsibility lie? So really important topics that we hadn't quite pondered before. And I don't know, Karen, do you want to add anything to that?
What it's going to do moving forward is validate the master plan for how art is procured and what we do with it, the actual process. So there's going to be a process in place that is very black and white, that everybody knows how it works and the steps that get taken for everything to occur. This was not the case when Madison and I first came on to public art. Things were all over the place, a complete mishmash. And it feels really good that this master plan is very tight and heading in a very successful direction.
Great. Anything else, Madison?
Oh, we also got an update about the mural at Midtown. And it started to degrade. And so we had it restored and it's already degrading again. And we think that's because, I think, like the seal that was used or the gloss finish, so to speak, there is a failure in that product. And so... to speak, um, there is a failure in that product. And so the people who did the restoration are, they think they have a plan for how to fix that, but, um, the mural is going to possibly get another touch-up soon.
Thank you. Yes, Karen.
My final comment. So, um, before we go on to oral communications number two, um, as this is my last meeting, as a voting member of the city council, I do, um, want to put a few things on public record. So I've written it down. I usually read what I write, so people can't argue that I said one thing when I said another. So here we go. I'd like to put a few things out there on the record in order, a thank you. And then I want to talk very briefly about fairness and an apology to the community. And finally, a heartfelt welcome to a couple of people who are going to be joining us. So first, I'd like to thank the people of Brisbane for giving me an opportunity to serve their interests for many, many years. I truly appreciate your past votes of confidence. I've been a trusted volunteer and then elected official in Brisbane since 1994. Um, second, about fail, fairness and an apology, specifically to apologize to the citizenry for the apparent lack of transparency regarding the passing over of, of Cliff for mayor. Uh, this has been touted as unfair by some to him. Our community has been clear that it wants greater transparency. This came up particularly with respect to the mural rotation question this last couple of years. I want to say that we all heard you and we all want to be as transparent as we can be moving forward. And I would ask the future councils to be as transparent as they can, and if they can't, to tell you why. However, there is a short list of things we cannot be fully transparent about. And that was the case in the matter. So no matter what version of this story you have been told, when the city attorney says there is significant risk of litigation, we listen and we do what we're advised to do to protect the city. And that is what is fair to all of us. So unfortunately, that gave some people an opportunity to make up their own version of the truth and basically tar and feather the majority of the city council, which was the case. Finally, I want to laud everyone for their great choice of Frank Coon to take my seat here on the city council, starting next week. That's why I wanted to do it tonight, so we didn't sully those waters. Uh, Frank has proven that he is a worthy, he is worthy of this great place in our city. Another thank you goes out to everyone for another great choice. And that is the choosing of Christine Oquendo to fill the seat on the scoreboard. Christine comes with wonderful skills that we will all need moving forward. So congratulations, Frank. You've now heard me say my piece. We were tarred and feathered, and we're going to move on. And everybody is going to have a wonderful time moving forward. Welcome, Frank. That's it, folks.
So I do think you have to show up on the dais next week.
I know, but I didn't want to say icky things.
Well, you said your last meeting where you vote, you will have to vote on something, I'm sure, even if it's just the agenda. So that sort of move, move us on to written communications. And I did have, we did see a comment from someone in the public on written communications that when we get a list of written communications, um, read out, we don't say what they spoke about. And while I agree that we should not go into detail, it is in, you know, attached to the packets. But I do think that perhaps if we have the subject matter, um, you know, where we say someone spoke about the draft EIR or whatever it may be, that that might be helpful. And I don't know if you have that information with you now. Um, but I think that might be good to, to read out when we do read out about communications.
That was what we used to do as well, for the record. We used to say the subject.
Just depending on time, sometimes I would just run through the content, not the con, not the title of the subject matter. So we have Manara. The subject line is Quarry Development Plan. We have a correspondence from Christensen regarding the draft EIR comment form Guadalupe Quarry Redevelopment Project. Chris Florkowski regarding the CSSC and the Guadalupe Quarry Redevelopment Project Draft EIR, and Straw regarding Guadalupe Quarry Redevelopment Project Comment.
Thank you. Um, and that will move us to oral communications, too. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on an item that was not on our agenda? I see no hands raised. Do we have anyone online that would like to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And that will move us to the adjournment. And it is, I'm going to look at the other clock here, 9:50, and I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.